I would like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Tuesday, May 2, 2023, commencing at 7:00 PM. The community can attend council meetings in person, view meetings on Facebook Live, YouTube, RCTV, Comcast Channel 21 or 321, simply Channel 34, listen live by calling 510-335-7371. I will call rolls, starting with Council President Forsyth.
Here.
So Vice President Kritzer.
Here.
So Member Anderson.
Here.
So Member Carson.
Here.
So Member Fields.
Present.
So Member Khan.
Here.
So Member Stewart.
Here.
First item on the agenda is a proclamation for Older Americans Month. Whereas the city of Redmond includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community, and whereas the Redmond community benefits when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds can have the opportunity to participate and live independently, and whereas Redmond recognizes the need to create a community that offers the services and supports older Americans may need to make choices about how they age, and whereas Redmond can work to build an even better community for our older residents by not limiting our thinking about aging, exploring and combating stereotypes, emphasizing the many positive aspects of aging, inspiring older adults to push past traditional boundaries, and embracing our community's diversity. Now, therefore, I, Angela Burney, Mayor of the City of Redmond, Washington, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Older Americans Month, and urge every resident to celebrate our older neighbors, help to create an inclusive society, and accept the challenge of flexible thinking around aging. And we have some recipients this evening who will take the proclamation, and I just want to read a little bit about them. Each year, in honor of Older Americans Month, Redmond Senior Advisory Committee recognizes individuals and organizations that have contributed significantly to Redmond senior programs. The theme this year is Aging Unbound. The seniors who are receiving Older Americans Month Outstanding Volunteer Service Awards tonight are Karen Chow and Joan Glass. The organization chosen to be honored is Sunrise Senior Living of Redmond. Karen Chow has been a volunteer for Redmond's Meals on Wheels program since 2009. For the past 14 years, Karen has called each Meals on Wheels recipient to receive their order for their upcoming meal delivery. These order-taking calls to 30-plus seniors serve as a warm and friendly connection serving all with more than just a nutrition boost. Karen's dedication to the program, the Meals on Wheels clients, and the need for personal connections in lives of homebound seniors makes her well-deserving of this recognition. Thank you, and well done, Karen. Joan Glass. Joan has been the volunteer lead for the senior quilting group since 2015. During COVID restrictions, she kept the group connected through emails, phone calls, and an occasional parking lot traffic fabric swap. Together, this group donated over 1,500 quilts, blankets, pillowcases, and pet blankets to organizations such as Mary Bridge Hospital, Ronald McDonald House, Evergreen Hospice, and the YWCA Family Village. Joan's leadership role certainly highlights that she is very deserving of this recognition as a friendly, caring, community-minded person. Thank you, and well done, Joan. And Sunrise Senior Living of Redmond has partnered with Redmond senior programs during the last two years, sponsoring events and activities to enhance experiences for seniors. Sunrise has donated desserts for our curbside lunch, sponsored our senior day camp experiences, Camp We Go in the summer, and returned to Camp We Go in the fall, and supported our Oktoberfest party. Thanks to Sunrise staff Chris Shepherd, Ashley Highline, and Deborah Williams for their support. Your partnership with the goal of impacting the well-being of our senior community has sealed this recognition. Thank you. I have a feeling there will be pictures taken, so I will pause, and someone will let me know when the pictures are done.
The pictures were happening as we went.
Fantastic. Thank you all very much. The next item on the agenda is items from the audience, where members of the public inform the council of their views. Speakers have four minutes to address the council on any topic, and during that time will not engage the council staff or other audience members in conversation, debate, or question-answer sessions. Council members may not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council at any time at council@redmond.gov. The clerk has a sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When the clerk reads your name, you will come to the podium and have four minutes to address the council. There is a timer on the podium. When the green light blinks, there are two minutes left. Steady yellow means there's one minute left, and a red light indicates your four minutes to speak is up. Comments that go beyond the allotted time will be cut off. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the city of Redmond. And as a reminder, RCW 42.17A.555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot measures or candidates. Santos?
We have one person who signed up, David Morton.
Good.
Good evening, esteemed council members and honorable mayor. I'm David Morton. Hydrogen fuel cell electric vehicle technology has a lot of potential to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions and improve air quality, but there are several challenges and considerations that need to be addressed. One of the biggest challenges is the availability of hydrogen-fueling infrastructure. While there are over 100 hydrogen-fueling stations in California, there are none in Washington State for refueling hydrogen-fuel cell electric vehicles. Building new fueling stations can be expensive and involves specialized electrolysis equipment that uses an electrical current to split water molecules into hydrogen and oxygen. I'd like to suggest the construction of such a facility in southeast Redmond for producing hydrogen by electrolysis of water and possibly beginning a hydrogen-fueling infrastructure in Redmond. While this would be an exciting development in the field of sustainable transportation, it's important to carefully consider the potential environmental impacts of the facility. Southeast Redmond is located on a critical aquifer recharge area that recharges Redmond's drinking water aquifer, so any activity that has the potential to contaminate or deplete the groundwater must be approached with caution. Electrolysis of water to produce hydrogen is generally a clean and environmentally-friendly process, but there are some potential environmental concerns that must be addressed. One of the primary concerns is the management of wastewater and byproducts from the hydrogen production process. Electrolysis of water produces hydrogen gas and oxygen gas, but it can also generate wastewater that contains trace amounts of contaminants. These wastewater streams must be carefully managed to prevent contamination of the groundwater. To address these concerns, it will be necessary to carefully design and implement wastewater treatment systems to capture and treat any waste streams from the hydrogen production process, and it may be necessary to obtain permits from regulatory agencies, such as the Department of Ecology, to ensure that the facility complies with all applicable environmental regulations and standards. Despite these challenges, the production of hydrogen by electrolysis of water has the potential to play an important role in the transition to sustainable transportation. Hydrogen cars work by combining hydrogen and oxygen in a fuel cell to produce electricity which powers an electric motor to drive the vehicle. The only byproduct is water vapor. Fuel cell EVs also offer several advantages over battery EVs. They have a longer range and faster refueling times, making them more practical for long-distance travel and for buses and trucks. And fuel cell EVs do not suffer from the performance degradation that occur with battery EVs in cold weather, making them more reliable in colder climates. In conclusion, while the idea of constructing a facility for producing hydrogen by electrolysis is exciting, it's important to carefully consider the potential environmental impacts of the facility. By addressing these concerns through careful planning and design, it may be possible to build a facility that can produce clean and sustainable hydrogen fuel without compromising the quality of Redmond's drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you. The clerk's office received no request to speak remotely, and items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor Burney, there's an additional resident in the chamber who would like to speak and missed the opportunity to sign up on the sheet. I'm just giving you some visibility to that.
Okay, well, why don't we have them go right ahead, then?
Appreciate it. My name's David Haynes. I live in Redmond's Overlake area. It seems like the only investment in Redmond's Overlake is more transportation projects to patchwork, fix the road, and the sidewalk on 152nd. It's been going on for like eight months since I've lived like one block away, and they leave it a mess sometimes, and they're reconfiguring the concrete, but they've kicked up these swirls of dust for eight months, and the Overlake Village, where all the restaurants and grocery store and cafe are, have suffered significantly. And it's like, we need a law that says you need to have two shifts on the job, with 80% to 90% of the capital that's paid to that project go to the workers who are forced to pay the tax base. As it is now, it seems like 40% of the transportation money's invested is going to non-working shareholder middlemen who are oppressing the workers who have slowed down significantly to the point where they're not getting a full eight-hour day. And the Public Works Inspector needs to be brought here or like oversight investigated for allowing the construction company to dictate what the law is stipulating when it comes to them leaving a steel plate that's smaller than the ditch that they tried to cover over right behind my building where I'm riding my bike. And the steel plate's sitting over an inch and three quarters, and it's only supposed to be like less than a half or three quarters. So when you come down in the dark on the hill at the Overlake Park and Ride where they claim that's a side street that's not prioritized to have the patchwork fix of the coal tar ramp so it's safe to drive through where the buses are hitting and scooching it. So my bike wheel slams into it, jolts me stop, throws me over the handlebars. I'm holding on enough that it pulls my wheel over and rips a tire off and destroys my wheel. So I call up the construction company, and they say, well, according to the law, that's a side road. We don't have to do that unless it's a courtesy. I said, why can't you been courteous? You've been here eight months, man. It's three days. And so he repeats the law in a belligerent manner, and so I got pissed. I called the public works guy, and he seems to have been told what the law is from the construction company, like they took over the project and they've left a mess. You've got like five construction equipments being paid for eight months. Sometimes you've got two people operating it for a few hours, and they leave everything a mess like, oh, we're really working for the community, but all it is is a road and a sidewalk that's like overabundantly, like ridiculously, like confusing the area where you have four lanes to two lanes to four lanes to two lanes, and the sidewalk is still right next to the exhaust pipe flying past people. They tore down 90% of all the big trees, and there's nothing but this like godforsaken, condemnedible building that's got the Overlake Village, like buildings, like small businesses going out of business because it's just a horrible place. You need to have a redevelopment of the Safeways parking lot structure for like more neighborhood cafes. You've got to have like a more robust, friendly pedestrian concept of living where if you're sitting at the cafe, right, and there's a smoking section that's right next to you in front of the building, let me finish this. The cars drive right up and over 25% of the sidewalk, and you're sitting there within inches of the motor, and you expect the local multi-ethnic community to come down and enjoy that like it's better than elsewhere, when you have to have 21st century, first-world quality here. All the buildings that you have in pre-Microsoft should have been tore down with the zero taken off the property values, with everything robustly built out, with all the corporate banks around here being legislative to prioritize reinvestments in first-world-quality homes, commercial buildings, and schools, without the transportation bonds accommodating the laziness of the modern wheel driving through every neighborhood, bothering everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, I'll repeat, the clerk's office received no request to speak remotely, and items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
For second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, are there any items to be pulled? Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, I need to pull the granite construction contract and leave the room for conflict of interest.
That's item number six.
Thank you.
Any other items to be pulled? Being none, this is a roll call vote, starting with Council President Forsyth.
Aye.
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 And that passes seven to zero. Would anyone like to move item number six?
It was item number three.
Item number three, sorry. Item number three.
I would move item number three.
Second.
There are second? Moved and seconded, any discussion? Councilmember Anderson's left the room. This is a roll call vote, starting with Council President Forsyth.
Aye.
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 And that passes six to zero. Thank you very much. Next item of business is to conduct a public hearing and approve the Transportation Benefit District Formation Ordinance. Ordinance number 3120, an ordinance of the city of Redmond, Washington, adopting a new chapter 3.93 to the Redmond Municipal Code establishing a transportation benefit district, specifying the boundaries of the transportation benefit district, specifying the transportation improvements to be funded by the transportation benefit district, and authorizing the Transportation Benefit District Board to establish a 1/10th of 1% sales tax and other charges as authorized by Chapter 36.73 RCW, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. The public hearing is now open. The clerk has the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When the clerk reads your name, you will come up to the podium and have four minutes to address the council on the subject of the public hearing, and the clerk has informed me there was one person that signed up.
Kelly Reefer.
All right. Hello. My name is Kelly Reefer. I'm the executive director of Move Redmond, and I am thrilled to be here in support of the Transportation Benefit District being incorporated into the city's budget. Our organization sees this as a critical investment, not only to repair potholes and paving, but leverage this funding to improve safety and connectivity for city streets. Currently, the city is developing a road safety plan, bicycle design guide, transportation master plan, and the Roots to Rails pilot program. Within these outreach and planning processes, there's opportunities that arise to make swift improvements in the safety and usability in our streets that could exist outside the scope of major capital improvement projects. There is an opportunity now to use this funding in a flexible way to make necessary safety improvements to meet the city of Redmond's commitment to Vision Zero. A few examples that might align with TBD funding include programming more leading pedestrian intervals that give people crossing the street more time and visibility in intersections, and adding better ADA accessibility and applying universal design principles to street crossings. In the city's outreach for Roots to Rails, members of the community suggested great project ideas like lighting on trails and better crosswalks, and through these kinds, though these kinds of projects are beyond the scope of the Roots to Rails pilot program, they would be the perfect kind of projects to implement with funds raised through the TBD. They would illustrate that the city of Redmond is using tax dollars responsibly to further its commitment to safety and respond directly to community input. Finally, it is important to add that Washington State is in sorely need of additional progressive revenue for transportation projects. While sales tax will bring in additional revenue, the car tab fee most closely aligns with what I see as the future of transportation funding, the road usage charge. As we see gas tax dollars decline, the state needs additional revenue options. A road usage charge would tax people based on the amount of wear and tear and the amount of driving they do on the road. Sales tax and car tab fees can contribute, cannot continue to be the only revenue sources available for transportation benefit districts. The needs for TBDs or transportation investments are great and will require stable, long-term investments to fully fund these improvements. We know that sales tax disproportionately impacts lower-income communities and is not an ideal source of revenue generation, although I hope in the future we can work together to reach out to our state representatives and include additional options for funding TBDs. Move Redmond believes in the power of transportation to improve quality of life by providing people with real mobility choices. We know that transportation changes are necessary to reach our climate goals and to make our streets safer for everyone, and this is why we support the TBD and hope that funds can be used in a way that deliver on our biggest goals and values. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk's office received no request to speak remotely, and written comment has been distributed to the council. The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve AM number 23-055 for the approval of the Transportation Benefit District Formation Ordinance?
Councilmember Anderson will move the item.
Second.
There are seconded by, I think that was Council President? Is there any discussion?
Councilmember Anderson has a comment and a voice, apparently.
Yes, please.
Thank you. I am delighted to support the TBD ordinance because this is a very important commitment to the financial sustainability of our transportation network in Redmond. A TBD will provide us critical funding for critical infrastructure for this generation and beyond. Through adoption, it helps the city maximize the use of our existing legislative tools, which will also make us eligible for even more state and federal funding in transportation, and that will help us facilitate all modes within the city for all ages and abilities. Thank you. Delighted to support today.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I'm very happy to see the council move forward on the Transportation Benefit District because we know from our community that the state of our roads, and that's really where this conversation began, with our interim Public Works Director and our former Finance Director, to really cut into some of the deferred maintenance that we've seen in our roadways. I am and continue to be very, I don't favor the direction that council chose to raise sales taxes here in the city of Redmond in order to fund the Transportation Benefit District. I continue to be in favor of a user fee that is a more progressive fee so that folks who choose to live in neighborhoods like our urban centers and will live in future homes that are multimodal and very pedestrian-friendly and choose not to own cars in our city are going to bear a pretty, you know, the same burden as the rest of the city. So I've made several comments on this before. I don't need to restate it, but I do hope that there will be a moment in the future where this council can reconsider the decision for how we go about funding the TBD, to better align with our values around equity and inclusion, and to make sure that we are able to care for our roads while not placing the burden for that on those who will benefit the least. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Kritzer?
Thank you. I won't recover some of the points that I think Councilmember Anderson made, because I would echo some of her thoughts on just the importance of establishing this TBD. I will say that I'm excited to vote for this and to be able to form the TBD. What I see in the vote tonight is really creating the mechanism through which we can look at how we fund various transportation needs, and in our budget process, we did discuss especially the need for the state of our roads. My understanding is that the vote tonight isn't actually deciding exactly on the tax piece, and we will have more discussion on that, so I do look forward to having that discussion with my colleagues before we vote on that particular piece and to make sure that we're all really clear about what we're going into. But I think it's really exciting to take this step forward, establish the TBD, create a tool, and then do the work to figure out where we want to use that tool for. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Thank you, Mayor. I also support the resolution tonight and the continued progress that we're making to establish this. I want to speak to two things, sort of echoing the public testimony tonight. I, as Councilmember Stewart pointed out, I'm typically not in favor of raising sales tax because it is regressive. But in this situation, I see this as a potential opportunity for transformation, not just repairing our roads, which are in fact in disrepair, I can attest to that, but to actually result in a safer transportation system in the city of Redmond. And I hope that that's what we focus on when we make the plans and use the funding that the taxpayers are going to be providing to us. The reason I believe that the sales tax is the proper choice is because a transportation system does not just benefit those people who are driving. My son drives very little, and he relies on delivery of Uber a little bit too much. A lot of people get deliveries from Amazon, so there is a transportation system out there that serves all of us, and we need to have that up to date, safe, and on a path to say this makes sense for everybody who chooses all kinds of forms of transportation. I'm not going to go into my bicycle safety rant, but I hope that that is in fact a major part of what we do with this funding. So I'm excited that we're doing this. I do understand the burden of taxation. However, I think this is something that is really important to our community.
Thank you. Any other comments? Being none, this is a roll call vote, starting with Council President Forsyth.
Aye.
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 That passes seven to zero. Thank you all very much, and thank you to staff who's been working on the TBD. Really appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for our speakers as well. Our next item of business is ombuds reports. We have the month of April. We'll let Council Vice President Kritzer finish up, and then we'll ask Councilmember Fields if he has anything.
Thank you. So had a couple of comments from community members in the last two weeks. We had a concern from a resident who was dealing with a neighbor that was getting a lot of smoke into her apartment, who was living in a multifamily building and was dealing with some issues with her landlord and some of their comments around how city landlord-tenant policies affect their ability to address concerns that she had in their building. So I followed up with our staff to be able to identify if the information that she needed to have about how our city regulations actually impact that, and also to provide some other context of ways that she might be able to address the situation. Also got a message from a resident asking whether we could make it so that there are more swimming lessons available for four-year-olds at the Redmond Pool, which they are really filled up pretty fast, and I also could empathize since I would love more swimming lessons for four-year-olds at our pool. So following up to see if there's anything that can be shared with that resident. We also received some feedback from our last meeting from a resident who was concerned about some of the issues raised in public comment around arch housing, and I followed up on that. We also received reflections from a resident around some ideas for ways to be able to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion in our city. And then I also received, along with Council President Forsyth, a request from a community member to be able to look at providing for all city events in downtown park, making the bathrooms gender-neutral, to be more inclusive, especially to our transgender community members, and following up on that. And then also, I met with, this is just a personal ombuds, I guess, not just in my official ombuds, but I also met with a group of different community members that are very concerned around food insecurity in our community, and also some of our city staff were able to join to be able to brainstorm some of the future of the work on that, and I think there's some interesting discussions going on there. A lot of community members are concerned that there was a big cut in state funding for a program that provided a lot of food security support. So that's one that we'll continue to follow up on, and I'm happy to share more with the council on that as I hear more. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Thank you, Mayor. So it is May 2. I checked the email this morning, and there has been no communication through the Mayor-Council email channel. I look forward to hearing from the public and working with Jason to respond for the next rest of the 20-some-odd nine days of the month. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Council President Forsyth.
Thank you. I met with, along with Councilmember Stewart, met with the RCCC folks to discuss a potential path forward for the emergency response volunteers and get some clarity around that. Then she and I also met with our staff and our fire chief to discuss that topic as well. Had the amazing opportunity to read the Arbor Day Proclamation at Grassland Park and give that proclamation to the local Girl Scout troop that was there, working towards their Silver Award. Met with the United Festival and Pride Festival folks to talk about concerns around their upcoming events this May and September. Attended the opening of the dog park, also with the mayor and Council Vice President Kritzer, and dropped by a few times throughout the rest of the week to see how that was working out and talk to folks. And so far, only positive comments. I think there was one person that had something negative, and it was, where's the other one? So folks are very engaged and very excited about it. And then received an email from a person in Missouri asking for details about our graffiti wall and wanting to stand up their own graffiti wall in their city as a way to work towards youth drug prevention.
Thank you. Councilmember Carson.
Thank you. I had two items for ombuds. One, I'll tag on to what Council President Forsyth said about the dog park. I think the only negative comment I heard was, why do people let their dogs dig? And it was like a foot, it was this massive hole in the grass, and I haven't been back. We've been twice now, but haven't been back since the Monday. Monday morning from eight to 10 is the maintenance schedule for the dog park. So I imagine that some turf had to be brought in for some patching. So don't let your dogs dig, is the moral of that story. And then, secondly, I was contacted by a resident who has been hearing some loud repetitive banging from time to time, and it's, he can tell that it's across the valley. He's on Education Hill. And I think I've narrowed it down, and I've got an email out to the organization, and I'll peel some layers off the onion at a later date on that, once I've confirmed what it is. So, thank you.
Thank you. And if you've ever had a dog that digs, it digs. It's hard to get them to stop, so. This will be refilling that hole. Councilmember Stewart, you had your hand up?
Thank you, yes. And thank you to Councilmember Carson. I also took down some notes about a call related to the repetitive, and I was told that the individual, the resident from Education Hill, had contacted all members of council about that issue. So thank you for following up on it. Teamwork, I appreciate that. I had a couple of folks stop by my office hours to talk about the Overlake incentive package, and they raised a couple of really great questions that affirm for me that Overlake residents are really eager to see some of the amenities that we're planning for, but also what was kind of new and refreshing for me personally was the role of the business community in that, in creating third places for residents. So it is a neighborhood that, you know, currently could really use a coffee shop or a pub or a neighborhood gathering space, and that's going to likely be a business partner that leads to that. So really appreciated that conversation. As Council President Forsyth mentioned, she and I met with a couple of community members regarding the change to the Emergency Preparedness Program, and then again with the staff. So because I am a newly minted member of the Community Emergency Response Team, I want to just make a couple things crystal clear. So while the arrangement with the organization that has been doing some of the volunteer management on this piece, while that part has changed, our volunteer capacity for emergencies here in the City of Redmond has not changed. So any CERT or ARES team member who already had an emergency worker card on file is absolutely still an emergency worker here in the City of Redmond and could be called upon. And just this week, there's been lots of great communication about ways to continue to be engaged, including for the newest class. So just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items? Seeing none, our next item is committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? So President Forsyth.
Thank you. I attended the PSRC meeting this month, and then moved the budget package forward to the General Assembly meeting in May. Attended the SCA Blake Conversation that was held last week, where the Blake decision expires July 1st, as there was no progress made during session. But they just announced that special session will start on the 16th, I believe, is what I heard. So that is still in the works. Attended the SCA Deputy Mayor/Council President Conversation and learned a lot of things that are coming up in the community. I'll flip through my notes and find it. Moving right along, the mayor and I had the opportunity to attend the bill signing for Senate Bill 5452 on impact fees and the usage, and it was such a great effort by our staff to get that bill rolling and a great lift by our lobbyists and everyone involved. So really excited to get that money to be used for bike lanes and bike ped work. So it's awesome that we did that. So congratulations to everyone who worked on that. And I attended the FBI Citizens Academy again this last couple of weeks. We talked about, with the legal counsel, we talked about weapons of mass destruction, domestic terrorism, and Indian country. And interestingly enough, the first question they answered on Indian country is the reason it is still called Indian country and has not been changed in the name is because it is actually codified in federal code as Indian country. So until that changes, it will still be known as such. Tending my last class for that this week, and graduation will be on the 13th. So that's pretty exciting. And also attended East Trail, and we have a bunch of activities coming up. May 12th, there will be an East Trail Bike Ride. May 19th is Bike to Work Day. There will be performances on Wednesday evenings, July 12 through 26, at the Ferret and Spur in Kirkland. And there's an opportunity to give feedback on the art for East Trail that is compensated. And I believe I posted about that on my official Facebook page, if anyone is interested in joining that team. And there's also going to be, in the Renton section of the East Trail, during their River Days, they took a cue from us, and they are doing a drone show, July 21 through 23.
Thank you. Councilmember Carson.
Thank you. So I wanted to just highlight something that came up in our Community Facilities District meetings tonight. So about six months ago, I think I was, I wasn't ombuds, but I got an email from, I think maybe it was a personal interaction with a member of the community, and the topic of Microsoft's investment in the community came up, and I realized that we had no way to, we hadn't done any outward display of the things that Microsoft, so Microsoft is that partner in our Community Facilities Districts. We have two of them. And they've contributed millions of dollars to construction projects that we manage. And they obviously benefit Microsoft, but they tremendously benefit other parts of the community. And, but we had no place on our website where we showed this, and I thought it was really a shame that we weren't really showing our work and what good things are coming of that public-private partnership. So I brought it up to the CFD at the time, and staff said, hey, you know, we think we can put up some basic information about the kind of money that is being contributed. We also go out for state grants and federal grants with the Community Facilities District, but by and large, the funding comes from Microsoft directly. And so that work has been done now, and so I just wanted to let the community know about it. If you go to redmond.gov and you go to, gosh, no. you will, I know it's long. I wish we had a shorter one, but you will find some details on those two Community Facilities Districts that we participate with Microsoft in and the benefits of those entities. So anyway, thank you, and I think that was it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Appreciate you sharing all that, and we'll have to work on a shorter link title. And let's see. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Earlier tonight, we had the Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works, and we got to have a really great conversation kicking off the planning process for our Economic Development Strategic Plan with Philly Marsh and Seraphie Allen. Lots of great conversation about what does continued recovery look like and what does an economic development strategic plan look like in collaboration with all of the other plans we have, you know, here in our city. So really great conversation. We also sent to the May 16th Consent Agenda the acceptance of two grants related to waste reduction and waste management, one of which is for hazardous materials. I also had a chance last week to attend the Puget Sound Regional Council Joint Session on ACT, which is a tool to discuss race and the impact of institutionalized racism in policy. I had a really great experience on this call. The call had board members and committee members from King, Snohomish, and Kitsap Counties. I found it really useful, and despite the fact that it's a virtual training, I have to acknowledge that PSRC did such a good job of engaging adult learners online for a full couple of hours. So I just wanted to encourage my colleagues. If you see that one come through again, I actually, I thought it was a really useful session, and I've been thinking about it a lot since then. So, thanks.
Thank you so much. Vice President Kritzer.
I just wanted to add on the Community Facilities District that since Councilmember Carson brought up the CFD, and I realized, I think we should probably report in this section more often on what goes on in there, is that we also had our Audit Exit Conference for both CFDs today, and the audits looked good. So just wanted to share that with the council.
You so much. I normally don't share committee things here, but I wanted to share a couple of things. One, I had the opportunity with our Planning and Community Director Carol Helen to go to the City Summit of the Americas in Denver last week, and we were able to meet with cities from all over the hemisphere, from Canada all the way through the Americas, all the way to South America. We talked about sustainability. We talked about planning and housing and safety and security. And it was a really amazing opportunity to get to know a few of our locals in other jurisdictions, and it was really fantastic. So hopefully we'll be able to share more about what we learned and some opportunities there. I was even able to sit on a panel about funding for infrastructure to kind of go along with the CFD talk that we just had and talk about different ways that we, as a city, find funding and also support others from other nations who are really struggling to fund some really basic infrastructure in their communities. And we also had the opportunity to hear from some mayors from Ukraine, which really puts your world in perspective when they're talking about rebuilding their cities that have been destroyed. So it was a really great opportunity. And then, as you may notice, I'm virtual tonight. I'm in Chicago as part of the Housing Accelerator Group that I've been appointed to through National League of Cities, and where tomorrow we're going to be discussing funding and labor supply for housing nationally, and we'll be able to go on a tour of some Chicago projects. So I'm really excited to learn more, share what we've learned, and bring those ideas back to our city. So just want to share a little bit of that, too. Let's see. Next up, are there any other committee reports or anything else anyone wanted to report on? Don't see any. That there is no unfinished business, there is no new business, and there is not an executive session. That concludes our business items for this meeting. If there is no objection to adjourning, hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much, and have a great night.